Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the planning board meeting in Tel Aviv, January 22nd.
I pledge allegiance to apply to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, in this whole liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're into our regular meeting. Primary application for 14 Main Street, Wasake, New York. Jeff Barnett-Winsby, property owner. Exterior change to the building without building permit cited with code by code enforcement officer. And I'll have Judy read off the letter from our engineer and one from the attorney. And we'll have Jeff speak after that.
How about Jeff's next word?
Okay, you have to go up to the mic.
Yeah. Do you want to just announce or talk about what your project is?
Yeah.
Or do you want? I do have comments.
Maybe I should just respond to the comments.
Okay.
Because they all read the...
Yeah, yeah, okay. So this is from John Andrews, our consulting engineer from Rhodey Seikin Andrews. And we offer the following comments for your consideration. Neither of these items... Okay. This... We didn't get sufficient information to conduct a proper review, he says. We tried to provide you with sufficient information to facilitate your discussion. So this is the 14 Main Street, Wasake, New York. Tax parcel number 7165-0108-5850. Projects located in Hamlet mixed-use zoning district, the Hamlet exclusion area of the Stream Corridor overlay district, the historic preservation overlay district, and the Upland aquifer. A small portion of the property is located within the floodplain overlay. The project, as we understand it, involves the renovation of an existing and the conversion of the existing structures into an unspecified retail facility. No site modifications have been identified and/or detailed. The interior of the existing structure will be renovated to the proposed retail use. Exterior renovations appear to involve the addition of a second-story deck balcony, window replacement, and front facade modifications. The unspecified retail use is a permitted use in the HM zoning district subject to site plan review. Since the project is also located within the HPO and involves alteration of the structures including the deck balcony addition, facade modification with window replacement that will alter the exterior appearance, site plan approval is required. The proposed project appears to fall within the thresholds for a minor project and should therefore be considered a minor project. The code enforcement officer has denied the application for building permit citing Town Code Section 121-14.2 (D), site plan approval requirement. Based on the information provided to us, it appears that the majority of the work involved with the alterations has been substantially completed. The material submitted is insufficient to conduct a proper review of this project. We call the planning board's attention to the Town Code Section 121-67, procedure for minor site plan approval. We note the following for the planning board's consideration. A short environmental assessment form is required. It is likely this is a type-two action under SEACRA and therefore not subject to environmental review. Submission of the SEAF is necessary to make that determination. B, certain basic material is necessary and required by code and including a sketch of the parcel and features of the site, the building, and any and all improvements related thereto. C, no public hearing is required. However, there is still the obligation to refer the action to the county and agricultural parcels as may be appropriate. The project is within 500 feet of a county road. D, the planning board must find at a minimum that the proposal is generally consistent with the criteria found in Section 121-65D and will not adversely affect neighboring properties. The planning board needs to determine the information to be submitted to properly review and approve the required site plan. The planning board will further need to address such site items as water supply, wastewater disposal, parking, landscaping, and lighting. The project is located in Hamlet... Oh, I'm going on to the next one. There you go. I'm going to read Paul's now. Is that what you want me to do?
Yeah.
This is from our attorney, Paul Van Cot, from White Menosha, Manhattan. Board, we agree with the comments from John Andrews. Applications and escrow fees should be provided by the applicant consistent with what is required for other applicants. We have only cursory reviewed the materials provided to avoid cost to the town, which should be borne by the applicants once applications are submitted. No public hearing is required, and they appear to be SEACRA type-two actions requiring no further SEACRA review. Once the applications are received and initially reviewed, they should be referred to the county planning department for GML 239-M review. Both of the... Okay. The project involves work that has been done without prior planning board review or approval as required by zoning law. It's been referred to the planning board by the CEO for site plan review, and the board needs to consider what information it needs in order to make a decision on the project as undertaken by the applicant. The board has discretion to waive the need for information it does not deem necessary for its review of these projects. Any other enforcement action undertaken by the CEO is separate from the planning board's review, and decision is subject entirely to the CEO's discretion. Paul.
Jeff, step up to the mic. Speak your piece, please.
Jeff, can I ask you a question?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes. Say your name and all that good stuff.
Jeff Barnett-Winsby.
Was there... There was a work permit that was pulled that he then gave you a cease work?
No, I talked to him and showed him the inside of the space. We... When we bought this space, it was a distressed property. We bought it at auction in the county, and the previous owner had demolished the inside. I mean, there was no drywall left. They ripped out all the pipes. They destroyed it. And I guess I understand, but it was demoed. And so what I had in there when we were cleaning up more was it revealed that there were the original openings for the two windows and the front door. You've seen in the pictures, the historic pictures. All that framing was still there. And so I ran into Mike on the street, and I was like, hey, can you come take a look at this? And he came in, and I was like, can we just put these back? And he said, yeah. And that's what we did. Then, you know, from what I understand, there was some other folks upset about the space. And he said, you need to come in and pull a permit. I figured out that I'm going to reject it and send you to the planning board. And I said, okay. So here I am.
Good question. I'll take that one, too.
I mean, that's kind of the long and the short of it. I mean, this property is a little confusing. I mean, there's some other things to address in these letters, but, you know, at the end of the day, all we were trying to do is make the downtown look more attractive. I didn't want to rip off the porch that was put on there later, but, you know, this was, historically speaking, the first floor was retail and the second floor was residential. That doesn't make sense at this point based on the lantern's proximity and, you know, the trucks at the post office at 6:00 in the morning. And so we thought, well, what, you know, we've got an interested party that wants to do a wine shop or shop of some sort if they're not able to get a liquor license for that. And it was sort of the right moment to try and put it back. And, you know, Matthew Manour spent a ton of money on that other building, and it's... The downtown's sort of coming together. It feels really nice, so...
And do you know from these documents that went back to you what you need to do? And is there something that you find objectionable or overbearing in what they're asking you to do? Or are you here because this was just a required part of what they told you to do?
Yeah, I'm here just because, yeah, they just said you got to come in. And so I guess we're at the beginning of this conversation. And, you know, I certainly didn't mean to sort of thumb my nose at process. You know, I talked to Mike, like I said, and, you know, whatever mistake was made there, I feel poorly about. But I think we did a good job. I don't think we did anything objectionable, and we did it extremely affordably, which was important. I mean, we're... We've been sort of sitting in a bit of a holding pattern for a while on this property because I went through the process with the assessor of trying to join that parcel with the lantern parcel and also the house behind it. And I thought that that had all been done, and that got sort of lost in some paperwork and the shuffle and all this stuff. And now we're just readdressing that again. But I spent the money, I did the thing, and we're over a year past the time that it was supposedly...
Right.
Thumbs up. And we were going to try and tie into the lantern septic and water system, both of those properties, because they're all on top of each other, which is not particularly healthy. The white building that we're talking about, 14 Main Street, I mean, I don't know. Bobby could tell you, there's not much of a septic back there at all. And when we first got the lantern, we'd, you know, we'd see them pumping it out into the creek. I mean, it was...
Right.
It's like a bathtub, basically. So it wasn't really making much sense to do anything with either of those spaces unless we could tie them into the wastewater treatment plant that we built at the lantern. So we've been a holding pattern on that, basically.
And that's the county, though, presumably?
That's the town. Because... And I don't know totally why, but I was given the thumbs up, and this is all happening. We spent the money, and I went to go check on it and get the updated parcel number, and they hadn't been joined.
Okay.
I mean, I think we should at one point have a conversation with Mike and say, how does this happen if we want to make any kind of development a little easier and make it all consistent so that when someone runs into the street, they don't go, hey, can I do this? And there's a verbal conversation we have no record of. So I'm just looking now at the zoning code, 121-65D and whatnot. I'm looking at what was prepared by John. And what we need is just review some documents, as I understand it... Please, anyone correct me if I'm wrong. Look at the site plan, look at a couple of sketches drawing, realize some of it's been done, and then we can okay it. You can get your permit and move on. Is that what this looks like?
That's what it looks like to me. We're at the unfortunate situation where the attorney nor the engineer are in attendance tonight. But I don't... Speaking for myself, I think we want to try and make it easier. I know the building. I mean, there's nothing but good things...
Appreciate that.
...that come out of fixing a building up in that part of the downtown. Like, I would like to facilitate it without obviously not undertaking or requiring responsibility that we have in law, but...
So what we need to do is talk to John and Paul and say, we discussed this. Is this right? We have to be provided with this, this, this. And once we're provided with that, we can act on it as soon as they've had a chance to review it, once it's submitted.
I think we have all of that.
We have everything.
Yeah. We have all of that. You've demonstrated that you're returning the building back to... You've given us photographs that show what the historic... Sorry. You've given us photographs to show what the building looked like, that it's in context, and all of the things that we would need to evaluate it. So... And John and Paul have provided us with direction on what we're supposed to do tonight. I guess the one, the only question that I had, and apologies that I'm late in case you already answered this, but according to this, or the guidance that we got from our attorney, the work was done without a building permit? Are you waiting for a building permit?
I didn't... So when I talked to Mike about it, it didn't seem clear that I needed one because I was replacing the windows. Clearly, there's been a misunderstanding about that. He asked me then to come in and get a permit later.
Okay.
Because we weren't under the impression that I needed one. And I think what we're all doing right now is just kind of trying to play catch-up a little bit and get everything, you know, i's dotted, t's crossed. So it's not that I did the work and was like, gee, I guess I'll go get a building permit. Now, I think he was like, let's just go through this whole process so it's on the up and up, and everyone feels like this is a fair process, and I'm...
So let's cut to the chase. Do you have a building permit?
No.
No.
He needs to be here, microfitted to the planning board.
I applied for one when he asked me to, and he immediately rejected it as he told me he was going to, and then referred me to planning. And then Judy and I worked together to create sort of this initial narrative document and background, and then...
Can I ask you?
I don't understand what the holdup is, then.
Well, neither does Jeff.
The holdup is because... The holdup is that fundamentally, the holdup is because it's in the... You know all this because you went through it with the lantern. Because it's in the HPO, anything that you do on the exterior of the building needs site plan approval because it's in the historic district. That's fundamentally what you need. And my understanding from reading all the material is that the only change that you've really... I mean, you made a couple of changes, but based on the photographs that you provided, you just returned it to what it used to look like.
That's right.
Just plus a little better.
That's right.
And that's the interest of, right? The historic overlay is supposed to protect that and make sure that those things are getting done. And you have demonstrated that with all the photographs. It sounds like there was some disconnect between what you guys submitted, which was a lot of the information that is on our list, and when John prepared this, right? So maybe he just didn't look at it? So like, we have your photographs, we have a site plan, we have essentially a site plan. I think you did the short EAF. If not, just...
That's what... Yeah, that's what I was wanting.
Bing, bang, boom. I think you can just finish that up.
Okay.
It's type-two action. You don't need a public hearing, blah, blah. So why don't we do this? Why don't we... I mean, I think reasonable next steps would be if we don't have all the information, just go through the list. We can provide it to you. You need a short form environmental assessment. You need a sketch of the parcel. You provided all the photographs, and then just write us a letter or an email that says, go through all the criteria in 121-65D, which is the historic district regulations, and say, we did this, we did that, you know, we comply, we don't comply. And then presumably, we can... If you get that to us pretty quickly...
Yeah.
We can circle back with Mike, and John, and Paul, and George and Ringo, and ask them to...
Good luck with that.
You know, pull all the information together and presumably give you the building permit. If everybody agrees, it sounded like it's...
Here's the bottom line. Who's going to pay for the attorney?
Well, you have to post escrow.
Yeah, no, I'll pay for it.
Post escrow, right? Because you're submitting a formal application.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm happy to submit.
Yeah.
Because that's what's all going to boil down to. All going to a dollar or cents, let's be real here.
Yeah. There's an application fee. You know what the application fee is.
Happy to do all that.
Just drop it in. It should be very, you know, perfunctory, like I said, you know? I think and George and John and Paul agreed that the goal here is to make sure that the historic district is protected, respected, that sort of thing. You have demonstrated that in your documents.
And I hope restored, too.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, it's weird. What time are we looking at? You know what I mean? But still, I think that, you know, the initial sort of heyday of that downtown is sort of what all of us value aesthetically at this point, and...
Sure.
Yeah.
What's your potential with the building?
Well, retail. I'm hoping it's a wine shop. If it's not a wine shop, it'll be something else. But what it won't be is a zombie house anymore.
Yeah.
So that's good. The other thing that I think was noted maybe by the attorney was the need for, like, addressing water and parking and things, and lighting. I mean, do we just want to have a quick chat about that so I can address that appropriately? I mean, you know, our plan, because we were going to combine the buildings, was to not offer a bathroom to customers and have the employee or tenant utilize the lantern bathrooms. I think that that's probably okay. And if it had been all one property, that would have been a no-brainer. I don't really want to spend the money at this point to put in a new well and new bathrooms for this place. I really just want to use it as a retail space. From the perspective of parking...
Across the street.
I mean, we have what we have. I maintain it. I plow it. No one else plows it. I mean, it's not mine, but we don't know whose it is, so I don't know. Maybe I get to keep using it.
I mean, what we've done in the past is we've said, listen, if you can demonstrate that you can share parking, on-street parking, with someone else, whether that's Lantern or across the street...
Yeah.
Or Wasake Project or whatever, within a quarter mile. We usually say it like across the street or somewhere else.
Yeah.
You know, just... You don't know your overall...
Well, it's not another... It's not another space that plays host to 150 people at a time, right? It's a space that maybe you'd be lucky to run into two other, three other people in there at the same time buying a bottle of wine or something. I mean, I hope it's busier for Erica's sake, but it's not like hosting a whole bunch of people in that space. So I think it can coexist fairly nicely.
The only caveat I would give on the bathroom front is I don't think any of us here maybe need it, you know? But if there is a requirement on whether it's an habitable structure or not, that it requires a bathroom, obviously.
You don't have an apartment there.
No, and in fact, I invite you all to come see. I did not renovate the upstairs at all. It's very much the same as it was. So we'll utilize that for storage, basically inventory storage, and the public will not be allowed up the stairs.
But there is a bathroom in there.
No.
No.
No, it was torn out by the previous tenant.
You might be up against a board of health, though. That might be your issue.
I don't think so. As long as they have access to another bathroom, which she does...
I think you have to maybe get a letter or something that says, from the board of health, that says, we acknowledge that this is a retail space only, you know, there's a bathroom next door, which is open to, you know, the employees whenever they need it.
Yeah, happy... I'm happy to do that.
That, I think, would be helpful to us.
Definitely. You might be up against that.
I mean, honestly, the ball is in the town's court right now around joining those lots. I mean, as I mentioned earlier, that's a process I started well over a year ago here and was told that it was happening. So I thought that that was done, in which case that would alleviate the need for a board of health letter because it would all be same property.
We never saw that subdivision application.
I... That's bananas to me, but I...
You're talking about a lot-line change, then?
A merger.
Yeah.
A merger.
A merger of three lots together.
So dig up your paperwork, send it back to us.
Okay.
Put it at the top of the...
Okay. I appreciate that very much. It's with the assessor, so I'll speak to her.
Okay.
Yeah, because it's never been for us.
Yeah, we need to do that.
That's weird.
Yeah. We never saw that.
For sure.
I mean, because ideally, like, I turn those two units and put everything into the septic there, and then that all makes sense because we have the wastewater treatment plant that is... We have two redundant sides. I can't even run both of them. Our flow is so low. So it just would be really costly.
And would you add a bathroom once that was connected, or you would never intend to?
I would... I left all the plumbing, like, the plumbing stack in there, so it's certainly something that I would consider doing. It depends if my tenant pays rent or not.
Right. Okay.
You know, there's a lot of that type of thing where it's like, look, this is good for the community, and we're going to do this house and...
Right.
Or not this house, but this retail space. And I feel great about that, but if it's sort of generating a little bit of income, then I can justify more investment in it, but otherwise, no.
John's perplexed with his concept of free rent for the tenants.
We'll do it. Would the lantern... Would the wine store be mandated to open at the same hours as the lantern, essentially?
That would not be dictated by me. The wine store, I won't own that. That'd be owned, like, specifically by Erica, and she would make that determination. My guess is that if she's got good childcare lined up and it makes financial sense, like there's... Like, the lantern is driving people during that time period, my guess is that she would.
The root of your question is they'll have access to the bathroom whenever she needs.
I don't see her opening it at 10:00 AM.
Yeah. Okay.
Great idea. So...
Well, if it's not that, it'll be something else, and I'm sure she'll figure it out. It'll be great.
You haven't gotten a chance to get her liquor license yet.
No, and it's a... This one is the hardest one to get, and it takes well over a year. It took us about a year to get our license for the lantern, and it's... Yeah.
It's the hardest one to get because it's in proximity of a liquor license?
No.
Oh.
It's just really slow.
Do you have a good lawyer?
Yeah. Glenn Cabista.
Yeah.
You know?
Yep. He just got ours today for Millbrook.
Yeah. If you don't call Glenn, Glenn calls you.
Yeah. Exactly.
All right.
So you know what you got to do? Then come back, get the escrow set up, and we'll take it from there.
Okay. Appreciate everyone's time. Thank you so much.
Yep, you got it.
Thanks, Jeff.
Yes, stay warm. Primary... Next on the agenda is primary application, 3306 Route 343, meeting New York. James Healy, property extension. Change made to the building, develop a building, red site code. So you want to read that, Judy? Here's your one. Yes, yeah, here is one. I'll read it.
Actually, basically the same.
Okay.
The project's located in the Hamlet mixed-use zoning district, the Hamlet exclusion area of the Stream Corridor overlay district, historic preservation overlay district, and the primary valve, bottom aquifer. We have no information concerning the nature of this project before enforcement officers are issued to the available authority for remedy, citing several deficiencies, including citing Town Code Section 121-14.2 (D) and applying to CC, site plan approval requirement. Based on limited information provided, it's clear that the work stopped in process involving window replacement and facade modification that will clearly alter the exterior appearance, triggering the site plan approval requirement. The project's sponsors must complete an application for site plan approval. Two fifty minutes shall include the information identified in Town Code 125-65.B. Any measures from the requirements shall be requested in writing from the planning board with respect to documentation as necessary to justify the waiver. Only after the requested information has been provided can the planning board make an adequate determination of the information required to properly review and approve the site plan.
Is anybody here representing that owner?
I'm James Healy.
Step up to the mic, please.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Hey, how are you?
Good evening.
James, same question for you. I thought I heard that you had pulled a building permit at some point.
We were told so. We did this back in Memorial Day weekend, when we had time, when we were off from work. We were just going to change the windows because the windows were cracked and falling out, so we thought it was like a life-saving issue. So we went to replace the windows, and then from there, with windows, we didn't think that you needed to pull a permit to replace the windows. So then when we did it, we started taking everything off, and there was a whole bunch of rot because those windows were single-pane. So the condensation built up, and then rotted out everything underneath. And then we just put in smaller windows from what were there, probably only a few inches on each side, just to shrink up the windows. So we used the existing framing. We just shored up everything that was rotted out there. And then Mike told us, when he did the fire inspection, to hold off on anything because it's got to go in front of the board. And then... Not in front of the board, but you need to figure this out because we were looking at doing siding as well. We had the building painted, and then we were going to do siding, but then he said, wait, because everything's... And then he'll go back to me, and then from there, it just... we just got a work order, stop work order, I think it was October, somewhere right around there. And then I got the letter in the mail in December.
So our understanding is that the, Mike was told that the windows were going to be removed for repair, and then those, for repair of the sill and the area underneath, and then those windows were going to be put back in, same in kind. And if that wasn't the case, then they were going to be replaced in kind. But rather, what's happened is they were replaced with totally different windows that are not consistent with what was there before, or, and he, we don't have any, we don't have anything demonstrating what the building looked like historically and whatever. So that, that's really the interest of the historic district, same conversation we just had with Jeff, which is, the goal is to have any improvements, exterior improvements to buildings within the historic district, be respectful of what the buildings look like.
So the whole facade on the front, we were putting back exactly pretty much what was the original. Obviously, a lot cleaner and not rotten, no rot on the building itself. So the only difference was the windows, because you can't find single pane glass. I mean, the thermal value, the R-value won't be consistent with anything. So the way that we did it, we put into, we put the new windows in, and then there were, we just corrected the framing, corrected all the rot that was there, and then rebuilt them, and then we pretty much stopped right there, because we were told to stop.
They're like double-hung windows now, yeah?
I'm sorry?
They're double-hung windows?
Yes.
Yeah, that's not consistent with what used to be there. What was there before. You've replaced them with like a totally different style of window, totally different material, all that. And that's the interest of the historic district, is if you can demonstrate that that replacement is consistent with what used to be there at some point in time, or.
We kinda went off of, from across the street, the library, from down the road is on the corner, and then from the auto shop across the street itself, they all had kind of the same style windows. So we put those same windows in, and the front facade, the way it looks now with just the zip wall system that's on there, that's just a sheeting. So we were gonna finish that and make it look like it was originally there, to where the windows, you wouldn't even almost notice the windows, because right now, the windows are the main focus, because there's green board going around the whole entire front of the building, so.
Yeah, I think, I mean, we don't have any materials for this, so I think, you know, all that, which, that you just said, fair enough, but the board needs something, we need an application package, we need sort of the same thing that we just talked to Jeff about, which is we need a demonstration that this is why you made the decisions that you did, this is what was there before, this is what is gonna be replaced, this is what your plan is, and then, then we can have something to respond to and give to our consultants for them to take a look at it.
So what do you need from me? You need like specs and data sheets on the windows?
We need a full application. Judy can tell you what you need to put.
Yeah, I think I knew you one the day you were in.
Yeah.
I said, you'll probably have to fill this one out, site plan, site plan approval.
Okay.
I made it again.
Okay, yeah.
There's a whole, there's a list.
Okay.
Unless you gotta do, and, uh, come back to, give it to Judy, then we'll give it to the engineers. You're gonna have to have an escrow like anyone else, of course, and take it from there. That's all I can tell you. Let this give him time, guys, so.
Do you have anything you want to add?
Yes, I, yeah. Again, that window was cracked. To get a big, to get a big window like that, you can get in one day.
You gotta go to the mic, sorry.
No, no problem.
For John.
Yeah, 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 I'm sure. To get, to get a big window like that isn't something you could get in one day. We did this quick, because we don't know how it got cracked. It was cracked. It was very dangerous. Single pane windows are very dangerous. So we had to get something that we could get right away to make it safe. And then again, we both worked, so we got it, and we put it in over the weekend, and again, it took us, it was supposed to be a couple-hour job, took us a whole weekend, the whole holiday weekend, to fix all the rot and stuff. And the time we were doing it, everybody walking up and down the street was commenting on how much better it looks already with the green board and just those windows. So I get that it's not historical, but it is making the area look much nicer than what was there, and to JP's point is, I get that we're trying to keep hysterical, but if we're making it look better, and, you know, the house right next to us has vinyl, the house up on the corner has vinyl, they have, you know, double-hung windows, and also the tenant, that was not in there anymore, but when we showed her what we were doing, she was actually very happy that we were putting double-hung windows, because when it was nice weather, she had to keep the doors open. She hated that. She's like, oh, now I can open the windows when we have nice weather. So that's another, you know, plus to having the double hungs.
Fair enough, make your case.
Yep.
On paper.
Look, I, I think we feel bad off in sitting here, but we're just, our obligation is to, is to ensure compliance with the law, and we have this historic district that requires, you have to presume none of us have seen it. It's sort of, you know, I, I know exactly what it looks like. I don't disagree with how it looks, but at the same time, everybody has to presume that they've never seen it, and there's photos and drawings and the stuff. Hopefully, it's not too onerous. We don't have to go crazy about it, but I know exactly what it is. Yeah, I saw it. But hopefully, you guys can, if you don't have the package from Judy, you can get another package from Judy.
Yep.
And hopefully, it isn't too onerous, but unfortunately, it's, we have to require that of everybody.
No, absolutely, no problem with that. Again, we did not have historical when we were doing it either. You know, we didn't realize, you know, this was a thing, we didn't know you needed affirmative. Normally, windows, you don't need affirmative just to change. We didn't know it was historical, you know, but regardless, you know, we, even if we did know, we would have probably still put the double-hung windows in, because it was something we were able to get, and we had to worry about the safety of people, because it's right on the sidewalk. And, you know, if something happened, we would have been held liable, so.
Yeah, we appreciate that. It's great, it's, it makes it look nice, so. It's a formality. Definitely makes better than plywood.
Yep, that was everyone said, walking up and down the street as well.
You don't like that.
Thank you.
I think it looks great.
So you know what you gotta do? Go back to Judy, so forth, and then you come back to.
Okay, we also, since we're here, if we wanted to do vinyl siding or stucco, or just.
We gotta see it first.
Same process.
Yeah.
We got a whole, the same thing, and the same envelope.
Yeah, do it.
All together.
Yeah.
Yep.
And if you do it quick, we can get you on agenda.
Quick.
Faster you do it, faster we can process it.
Exactly.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Stay warm. Other matters, uh, you gotta accept the minutes from 1:825. If there's any, um,
Thank you, everybody.
Directions or mission to it or?
I sent Judy a couple of mine.
You need to mostly accept the minutes. You second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, we needed to discuss the cannabis local law. I thought we did this already in October. I know we sent some comments to the town already. Um, I guess we have to discuss it again in review of the new local law, yes. We all got the little, little comments she hear, and I, I think we just have to turn this over to our attorney right at the present time, and our engineer to, uh, to move forward with this, but it's open for discussion.
So the October referral was informal, um, just sort of, hey, can you guys take a look? Let us know what you think, since you're gonna be the people that are gonna be reviewing these. This is the actual formal referral, which is required as part of the zoning law, so, um, you know, zone change requires referral to the planning board. I know that they have a February 6th public here, right, they had a public hearing, and it was, it stayed open, right? Until February 6th. Um, John's comments or Paul's comments are two threshold questions. Do you want John and me to review the new draft of the local law? I think everybody responded yes.
Yes, of course we do.
Um, do you want to provide collective comments from the planning board on the draft law, with or without a special meeting? I think, you know, we should talk about that if everybody else, we can't defer our responsibility, right, to those guys? So we gotta review it. We gotta send whatever comments we have to John and Paul, then they'll put our comments in with their comments and.
Send it to the town, all right? We'll do it by email then.
Yeah, we can do that.
Do all our comments by email to John and, and Paul.
Fair enough.
Is that fair to everybody?
How's that sound?
Is that how you get this moved ahead?
Sounds like a plan.
Okay, so that's that.
Wait, are you reading?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I'm not reading the law. At the town board meeting where they continued the discussion of the local law, I believe the next board meeting, a week from Thursday, is where they're going to discuss the cannabis law. And we won't be back in session till the following Wednesday.
Direct.
So they're going to meet, discuss the law that we haven't given any comments on. What's the point to giving comments if they're already having discussion? I believe, I, that's why I'm looking a bit confused here.
Well, so what's that date? Is that the date, the February 6th was the date that their, the public hearing was continued to February 6th?
Right.
Um, which isn't, which is, is that, that's not next Thursday, but the Thursday after?
Correct. We're due tomorrow.
We're due tomorrow.
Wow, really?
So that means that we will.
No, today is the 20th second.
Two weeks.
It's two weeks.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Yeah, next week is the 29th.
Yeah, so presumably, we review it, send your stuff to John and Paul. Paul and John put it all together and send it to the town board in advance of the February 6th meeting.
I just wasn't sure that it was, the dates lined up, so.
We won't meet again before that. That's why we gotta send our stuff by email.
Well, we discussed that before. You know, my recommendation is they're gonna get a Tonic EBSO entrance, but. You think we're ever down? We're down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, whatever, whatever, whatever the town board decides to do, they're gonna do, but.
So, yeah, maybe you, you know.
If we're not going to meet before they have their public hearing, we are going to send in our comments on their law, revised law. Our attorneys will then reformat.
Our comments.
Our comments, and they'll send a copy to us, I presume?
Yes.
And we will not have had any discussion between us. So if you say, um, it should not be anywhere near wherever, and you say it should definitely be near wherever, how are our attorneys going to resolve all of this? There's something counterintuitive that I'm having a problem with. Why are we bothering giving notes if we're not gonna be able to discuss them? And we're not gonna even have a past draft reaction to it, you know? I mean, I'll do it, but.
Well, I'd be theoretically saying, like, we send our comments into John and Paul, and you're in that scenario, you're like, put it next to the school. And I say, don't put it next to the school. John and Paul will shoot back, and they'll say, Ken said to put it next to the school, but Nina said no. What do you guys want to do about it?
I think the important thing is we set a timeframe by which we're going to submit our comments to them, which is probably logically a week from today.
Week from today.
So they'll be able to, if they're willing to do it, and by the way, I noticed that scenario.
We could have a special meeting.
In our hypothetical, you're the one who wants to put it next to the school. See that?
Just ease of access. You, um, we could have a meeting, we could have a special meeting to talk about.
I'm just looking at the logic of this, I mean.
Well, why don't we submit our comments with the, um, suggestion to the attorney that if there are irresolvable contradictions in those comments, that we leave the possibility of calling a special meeting open?
And, and I think, good, fair.
Sure enough.
And if, you know, there was some, the, the materials were referred to this board without any instruction. They just sort of showed up. So we didn't know what the timeline was. We didn't know what they wanted from us. It didn't look like a formal referral of those things. So I would imagine that the town board would allow for some discretion in that particular area and potentially leave the public hearing open, if in fact, this board needs to regroup and talk about it again.
One would hope. They didn't want the notes from the planning board when they originally had their meetings.
Well, given that we're the people that have to review all these applications, one would imagine that.
I'm just saying what the reaction was. That was the reaction.
Imagine.
Yeah.
All right, I say move, that that's what we do. We submit our notes by a week from tonight, and we have our.
Whatever comments you have.
And if necessary, we convene at the discretion of the chairman.
Yes.
A special meeting.
I'll make, I'll second that.
What are the dates, and what's the motion?
The, this is, this is the deal. We're gonna have our comments in by next, a week from today to our, our appropriate people, the engineer and attorney.
By email.
Okay.
And by email, and if, if we feel necessary, I'll call a special meeting for us to convey any information we need to, if need be. That's the deal. All right, we're moving on.
Motion is seconded.
Motion is seconded. All in favor?
All right.
Aye, so carries. Uh, next for discussion is Keen Stud, um, planning board info. Where we are, there you go.
I agree with the, uh, email that Nina sent, that it's not appropriate for us to go off and consult with them.
We, yeah, we all decided that we would review all this stuff in common, that there wouldn't be.
Yeah.
John wouldn't meet with them, or individuals from the board wouldn't meet with those, anybody, any advocate.
Yeah, we get that.
Offline, so.
Did anybody meet with them all?
They requested.
No, they're asking for it.
Oh, oh, no, no.
The ask is, uh, from Peter Sander, by email to John Andrews on Wednesday, January 15th. "Good afternoon, John. Hope your week is going well. The Keen Stud subdivision team is currently prepping a submission, resubmission of the project, including a robust visual package for the board and George James to digest. Before that happens, we wanted to touch base with you," that being John, "on some of the more technical aspects of the subdivision design, blah, 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 which we haven't received with our biggest concern, blah, blah. Would you have some availability tomorrow for a call so we can discuss this and get your thoughts on it?" So John's, John's ask of us was, hey, what do you guys think?
No.
Do you want me to meet with them privately, or do you want with some people on the planning board?
No.
And I think the answer is no.
No, he answered no.
Okay, the answer's no.
The bottom word is that.
Okay, no.
That sums that up in a nutshell. All right, we're moving on next to. If they need it, they gotta come in front of us, then we'll discuss it from F. 9. Scheduled Levine subdivision public hearing on, uh, 2/26/25, so we're all good with that? Or this, the subdivision? Public hearing, Judy?
Yeah, this is. This is kind of like a follow-up to what the zoning board just met on last night to grant their area variance for their subdivision, because it's a lot that's less than 10 acres in a 10-acre zoning area. So they now have to come back for site plan approval for the rest, their subdivision. So, um, they're asking to speed it up, you know, so, um.
Can we get it out on the 26th?
Is that what I said? Yeah, that's what I said. I can't do it by the 12th.
Okay, so we'll be on the 26th then.
Yeah, if that's agreeable.
I'll make a motion that we, one, set the public hearing for the 11th subdivision for 2/26. We direct Kirk Horton to submit a short form EAF, and we authorize Paul and John to process a negative declaration in anticipation of the 2/26 meeting.
I'll set that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so carries. Um, is there see nothing else?
Wait.
All right. Go ahead.
We got the site plan for Da Vinci Windows. 10 feet tall, no longer is zoning compliant. So we approved it condition, we gave them a conditional site plan approval pending receipt of the site plan, so where, where they're gonna put the, the lighting, and what used to be a four-foot tall sign is now a 10-foot tall sign, and it doesn't comply with zoning. So we either need to direct the Da Vinci people to come back with another drawing that's now, we can't.
What is zoning, what is the maximum?
It has to be, what, six feet?
Six feet.
Six feet.
So can we just give them that advice?
Yeah. So I guess what we'll tell John and Paul, to talk to the applicant, or you can talk to the applicant?
Yeah.
I think John responded to that sometime today, too, that it's really a building department issue at this point, because we gave them resolution, um, with the conditions of what they, you know, specifically provided us with information for, and now it's a building department issue to make sure that then when they issue a permit, they don't go above and beyond what we approved already.
No, we gave them, we conditioned their site plan approval.
Okay.
That, that they would provide a revised site plan that is zoning compliant. Right, that was our condition of our approval. So now they've submitted this, and it's not zoning compliant. So it theoretically renders our conditional site plan approval.
Okay.
Non-compliant. So they can submit another drawing back to us that is zoning compliant, and then they meet their condition, and then they can get building permit.
Okay.
Makes sense?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. So we've had two revisions already, and now they're trying to revise the revisions, and they're not correct.
Yeah, we should just give them a page from the code, and say, like, this is what you need to meet.
They revised what we didn't ask them to revise. Just ask for the light to show exterior.
Yeah, and so now they've given us.
Yeah, other revisions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah. So what's the net-net? The net-net is what? We need to just talk to John and Paul?
Yeah.
Get back with Da Vinci.
Get back with them, get this reinforced where it's supposed to be.
Yeah.
Got it.
With that all being said, uh, with the story we had, with people in the Hydrant District, make sure their hydrants are cleared to the fire department at home, if need be. That's, that'd be real helpful for the fire department. And with all that being said, I need a motion for adjournment.
Some move.
You second?
Second.
Our next meeting is when, Judy?
Twenty, oh, yeah.
12?
The 12th, yeah.
February 12th is our next meeting. Everyone stay warm.
Yeah.